All right. Good morning, everyone, and over to you Chair Harrington.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, November 4th, 2025, Washington County and Clean Water Services Business Meeting. Clerk Moss, could you do us the formal honors, please?
Certainly, Chair Harrington. The Washington County Board of Commissioners also meeting as the Board Directors for Clean Water Services and all other county service districts is meeting this regular session, November 4th, 2025. Commissioner Schneider?
Here.
Commissioner Willie?
Here.
Commissioner Fai?
Present.
Vice Chair Therese?
Here.
Chair Harrington.
Here, struggling to find Kleenex in her purse. Thank you very much. Okay, would everyone please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. So next, I have a question for the board. Our first public communication session is limited to two minutes an individual, 10 minutes total. We have seven people signed up, so that would take 14 minutes. And we have, for our second public comment period, we have 30 minutes for that, five minutes per individual, and we have six people signed up for that. Would you like to limit the first one to five individuals for the two minutes, for 10 minutes, or see how it goes and attempt to have all seven? Okay, great. Clerk Moss, could you please invite those seven up?
Certainly, Chair Harrington. First two we have is Dale Feek and Roger Law.
Go ahead, Mr. Feek.
Thank you, Chair Harrington and Commissioners, Dale Feek. You already received two emails, one this morning and one before that, and one before that. Policy decision during the work session, I encourage anybody in the audience, anybody that's listened to this, to listen to the discussion that happened today during the work related to two resolutions, one about immigration and one about something else. It's very important to understand you as policymakers and what you're considering in making your decisions to make policy. I attended the October 28th conversations with Timothy Snyder, and I forgot my two books, but he got On Tyranny, and I've given all of those the opportunity to get that book, and he talked about On Freedom at the SNITS on October 28th. I tried to make a public comment through the phone, through Kevin, it didn't quite work, maybe it's my problem, it didn't work, but you had the email on that, but I listened to Timothy Snyder conversations with him. It was very informative. The Library of the Literary Arts Association is going to podcast on that, I said I would send it to you, it's very important you to listen to that, as I will re-listen to it. At the Clean Water Services Board of Commission Work Session this Friday, as you know, you all know that because I'm there, but everybody else doesn't know, I go to those work sessions usually called training sessions. I hoped when I talk with you this Friday that you will have read what I just gave to you, either in written form, you have it, or in email form. I'm going to ask you the questions, you have a chance to look at and skim it, because they're policy-related decisions. I encourage anybody to go to those Clean Water Services work sessions. It's coming this Friday, 9 to 4. Dale Feek, thanks for listening.
For public clarification and on the record, the Clean Water Services meeting on Friday is entirely a work session, they are not trainings. We follow Oregon rules and requirements for training sessions with all of our meetings. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Law.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. My name is Roger Law, I've been a resident of Washington County for over 40 years. I wanted to bring to your attention an article published on October 29th by the Mayor of Sherwood, Tim Rosner. I've given you a link to the article and a copy, and the title of the article is Sherwood Takes Action to Protect Our Right to Self-Govern. In January 2026, the amendment to the Sherwood City Charter with respect to land use will be brought to the voters. I will quote excerpts from the article. Sherwood City Council voted unanimously, calling for a special emergency election this January, giving our community the chance to decide on vital amendments to the city charter that will reaffirm Sherwood's right to govern itself. Threats come from state laws passed in Salem that continue to chip away at local control. Delaying these amendments until the next regular election could mean losing more of our home rule authority, the very principle that allows us to make decisions locally, with input from our residents rather than being told what to do by the state. This January, Sherwood voters will decide whether to enable these, embed these values into the city charter, lacking, locking in our right to self-govern and ensuring the future councils and future legislatures can't take it away. That's the end of the excerpts. I am intrigued and applaud Sherwood, a home rule city in Washington County, for utilizing their home rule authority and proposing to protect and strengthen it with these amendments. We ask again that Washington County, a home rule county, exercise its home rule authority and return control of elections to our county. Thank you for listening, the Spirit of Truth speak through me.
Thank you, Mr. Law. Clerk Moss, who's next?
Next, we have Kathy Walden and Celeste Nora Morales.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch each of your last names. We have Kathy and then Celeste. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners and Chair. I am Kathy Walden, a resident of Forest Grove, a retired orchestra teacher in the Forest Grove School District for 30 years, and I got to admit, I'd be much more comfortable playing the fiddle for you here than talking, but it's crucial, it's really crucial. I taught hundreds of little violinists, little children whose parents were seeking a better life here, and they were really getting involved in that sort of thing. And today, I'm representing Indivisible Forest Grove as a founding member. We had 800-plus people last month at our No Kings Rally around our flagpole. We are doing what we can to help mitigate the chaos, fear, and lawlessness of the current regime, including rallies following local legislation and creating and participating right now, it starts this week, a Feed Our Families program that combines Adelante Mujeres, Forest Grove United Church of Christ, and Indivisible to distribute meals to people who are, can you believe this, afraid to leave their homes because of ICE. Local faith groups and other community groups are stepping up to help. Now is the time for Washington County Commissioners, for Washington County to step up. We can only scratch the surface with our little groups. You can make big contributions to keeping this place livable for everyone, especially to assist our neighbors and fellow humans in this time of food scarcity and racial profiling. Mothers are being attacked and hauled off TriMet in Washington County. Fathers are being pulled out of McDonald's and Home Depot in Washington County. ICE is showing up, I can't believe this, at children's soccer games to apprehend people. It's time to step up as residents, as a county, as decent human beings in a country that promised hope and possibility. We call on the Commission to pass the SNAP and Community Support Emergency Declarations, and we strongly support funding them as responsible and caring residents as Oregonians, for the love of all the little violinists in the world. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Celeste Nora Morales, and I am proud to serve my lifelong community as a legal assistant with Ecumenical Ministries of Oregon, Sore Immigration Legal Services. Currently, I am the legal assistant at the Hillsborough SOAR's immigration office, and I actually work in the office that's next to the hospital that I was born in. I have to say that today, EMO and SOAR fully support this Commission's leadership in both declaring a state of emergency to address the community impacts related to the federal immigration enforcement, and providing desperately needed support for our Washington County neighbors' imminent risk of deportation. SOAR's legal Hillsborough office is less than a mile from here. We're located on Southeast Oak and Eighth, where we served over 600 individuals from Washington County last year alone, and as you can imagine, this next year, that's going to be incremented exponentially. SOAR Legal has been providing immigrant legal services since the early 1990s, and each year between our Loma County and Washington County offices, we serve over 3,000 low-income immigrants from over 80 different countries. We have never seen a situation this bad. We are receiving over 100 calls every day. I answer a lot of calls at the Hillsborough office, and I listen to every single voicemail that I can. And this is broken, and there's broken glass all over Hillsborough. A couple of weeks ago, I actually drove over broken glass on my way back to the office from my lunch break. It was heartbreaking. More than just these ICE actions, President Trump is also stripping lawful status of thousands of our neighbors who came to the U.S. from Afghanistan, Ukraine, Cuba, and 18 countries in total. Our staff speak more than 10 different languages and are members of these communities. Many of these targeted by ICE and by the status-stripping executive orders have been here for decades, and they are now at risk. EMO and SOAR also support the SNAP Declaration of Emergency, and we wish to highlight that refugees and humanitarian entrants have already been cut off from SNAP, including refugee children. We must provide critical immigration legal services to the most vulnerable, preventing the imminent risk of deportation, and standing with our neighbors. The community is telling us what is needed.
Thank you, Celeste. There's more Morales, thank you.
All right, next, we have Brianna Yubanes on Zoom. Brianna, can you hear us? So you're on mute, Brianna, can you hear us?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, please go ahead for up to two minutes.
Hello. I am a fourth-generation Mexican-American living in Beaverton, a U.S. citizen. As you know, we've seen a heavy ICE presence for the past week and going into this week. I have been unable to leave my house alone due to fear of racial profiling and being detained indefinitely with no access to legal counsel or communication with family. While I have the privilege of working from home right now, this has impacted my ability to do my job. I mentor at-risk youth, and not being able to see them in person impacts them as well, many of whom are impacted by lost SNAP benefits and are at risk of racial profiling. It's been difficult to eat or sleep, and I live in constant anxiety. Just this morning, there was an ICE sighting up the road from me on Shoalsberry in Beaverton. I'm not here just to provide testimony and support immigrant families, but to ask questions in the hopes of propelling forward further protections for our community, because as we've seen in Chicago, if we don't act quickly, our entire community will be put at risk of harm. Some of my questions are, how specifically can the county protect targeted groups at risk of racial profiling? We know that ICE has been detaining U.S. citizens and making arrests without a warrant. What, if anything, can the county do to hold these actions accountable and enact justice for impacted families and individuals? Will the county commit to taking legal action against ICE infringing on our constitutional rights? This is all I have to share. Thank you.
Thank you, Brianna. Clerk Moss, who's next?
The last one we have is Elizabeth Jenly. Elizabeth, can you hear us?
I can.
Please go ahead for up to two minutes.
I am Beth Jenly with Forest Grove Indivisible. For our October 18th No Kings event, we had more than 800 people out at the big flagpole in Forest Grove. There were many, many people there who protested ICE detentions and kidnappings, the lack of IDs, the face masks, indiscriminate use of tear gas and pepper spray, and the ignoring of constitutional rights and protections. Please, stop saying that ICE and associated agencies are performing immigration enforcement, when they ignore probable cause and due process, electronically surveil our phones, drag away people who are illegally in the U.S., kidnap undocumented but law-abiding people who have been contributing to the community for 30 years, zip-tie American citizens, and manhandle children, they are not enforcing the law. They are bringing terror and grief to peaceful communities, disrupting our economy and frightening children. We call on all our elected officials to continually remind our police forces that under Oregon Sanctuary law, police cannot assist so-called immigration activities in any way and cannot be deputized by ICE. We call on our elected officials to let ICE know they are not welcome here. We call on the Commission to pass the SNAP and Community Support Emergency declarations, and we strongly support funding them as described in the declarations. We appreciate the intention to support vulnerable families who are impacted by the threat of ICE activities. We ask that Washington County support placing signage everywhere in the county in English and Spanish with messages such as, "Keep loved ones together, stop ICE." We ask that the Commission offer or increase funding to local Latina-led agencies who are supporting affected families, documenting ICE abuses, and sharing Know Your Rights trainings in English and Spanish. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone else?
No, the last one dropped off, so that concludes this portion of the meeting.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to today's consent agenda, which consists of eight different items. One set of minutes, two items from Clean Water Services, one item from Health and Human Services, one item from Housing Services, two items from Land Use and Transportation, and one item from Human Resources. What are the wishes of the Commission with regard to adopting today's consent agenda? Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously, five to zero. Next, we'll move on to Boards and Commissions, and we have three different appointment sets to make today. The first one is to appoint two members of our community to the Clean Water Services Advisory Commission, from the Clean Water Services Advisory Commission, to the Clean Water Services Budget Committee. It's a motion or a action to reappoint Elaine Stewart and to appoint Nisha George, each to three-year terms on the CWS Budget Committee, with terms to expire September 30th, 2028. What are the wishes of the Board?
I move to appoint the two members of CWAC to the Clean Water Services Budget Committee.
We have a motion and a second. I will just add to that as one of five, that I appreciate these two CWAC members also participating on the Clean Water Services Budget Committee. Thank you for your continued service on CWAC. You've each been active members of CWAC, and Elaine Stewart has served on the CWS Budget Committee already. Not only have you served consistently there, but you've also been very present participants in all of that work, and as such, I'm very confident in your service on the Budget Committee. Having a motion, and there was a second, if I'm right, yes, thank you. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Board members. Any abstentions? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Next, we'll move on to appointment of Jennifer Hamelman to the Garbage and Recycling Advisory Committee for a term beginning November 4th, 2025, through March 31st of 2030. And this appointment, like the prior, we discussed at a recent work session. What are the wishes of the Board of Commissioners? Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Last but not least, we have one committee that is very specialized. It's the Rainbow Lane Special Road District, and we have the opportunity to appoint Craig McDonald to the Rainbow Lane Special Road District for a term effective January 1, 2026, through December 31, 2028. This is a reappointment. What are the wishes of the Commission?
Move to appoint Mr. McDonald to the Rainbow, excuse me, the Rainbow?
Lane Special Road.
Special Road District, thank you.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Thank you to that set of folks, but to all folks who contribute your time and energy in serving on the various committees, boards, and commissions for our two agencies. Next, we're going to move on to public hearings. The first one is to hold a public hearing and approve the resolution in order to adopt the supplemental budget for fiscal year 2526. You might remember that we had a presentation at our business meeting on this very subject two weeks ago, from our CFO, John Steyer. Well, at that meeting, I neglected to hold a public hearing first, so that's why this topic is before us today. If you have any need for further clarification, please do refer to our business meeting, the recording from two weeks ago. So at this juncture, I'd like to open a public hearing for the action to adopt our first supplemental budget for fiscal year 2526. Clerk Moss?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I did not see anyone sign up in advance. Mr. Feek, would you like to comment?
Chair Harrington, Commissioners, Dale Feek from Forest Grove, I really appreciate what Catherine Walden said and what Beth Jenly said from Forest Grove. I support and am a member of Indivisible Forest Grove, as well as Indivisible Beaverton, and follow Hillsborough, so it takes a whole group of people to make change. Of course, you as policymakers are in a critical position as a change agent in what you do in the way a policy for the county commissioners to follow, so I appreciate your leadership, especially Chair Harrington, during the questions that you had during the work session today, and I encouraged before, people get back and watch it.
Mr. Feek, how does this relate to the public hearing for the supplemental budget?
Because during, Chair Harrington, thanks for the question, because during that, John Steyer, is that how you say his last name? I sat next to him, had a chance to talk with him before he made his short two-minute presentations, and I thanked him for his expertise, his knowledge, his commitment, and also, I didn't say, in choosing good people to be on the Budget Committee. And I like the people that are being appointed to the Clean Water Service, Clean Water Service Advisory Committee, and also the Budget Committee. So I think it does relate, but maybe tangentially. Sometimes, my wife says I talk too much, but who knows? So the point is, I am in support of the budget. I think I said this last time, too, even though it wasn't an official budget, and I'm glad you corrected yourself. As you do, Chair Harrington, many times, you say, oops, I goofed, I have to make a correction, so that's what effective policymakers do, effective administrators, they admit their mistakes and go on, so, and I'm sure that's true of all the rest of you four county commissioners also, I'm sure of that. I finished ahead of time, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feek, for being a continuous presence and observer of the work we endeavor to do as the Board of Commissioners and Board of Directors for Clean Water Services. Thank you.
Was there any other member in the auditorium that wish to provide public comment on this public hearing, as you've heard from the chair? Not seeing those raise their hands or come forward. Is there any member on Zoom who wish to provide public comment for up to two minutes? Give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Clerk Moss, and with that, I will properly close this public hearing and ask my colleagues for a motion to approve the resolution in order to adopt the supplemental budget for fiscal year 2526, also known as FY26.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Next, on to our second and final public hearing for this section. This is an annexation item for the Twalton Hills Park and Rec. District. Welcome, staff, thank you for taking us through proper procedures.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. Teresa Terniak, Community Planning Section Manager with Land Use and Transportation, and Tricia Garrisco will give the presentation.
Thank you, Teresa. Good morning, everyone. For the record, I am Tricia Garrisco, Associate Planner with the Land Use and Transportation Community Planning Section. The item before you is Proposed Boundary Change 25-7, a request to annex one tax lot into the Twalton Hills Park and Recreation District, or THPRD. The subject property is located at 18425 Northwest West Union Road in unincorporated Washington County inside the urban growth boundary. The property is approximately half an acre and is shown here north of Northwest West Union Road, east of Northwest 185th Avenue, and south of Northwest Springville Road. The blue areas show the current extent of THPRD in the vicinity. This is a request by applicant John Fitch to annex this tax lot into THPRD to serve a future development. The annexation request was initiated by a consent petition from the property owner. County staff has reviewed the request and found it meets the criteria for boundary changes as outlined in the staff report. Staff recommends the Board conduct the public hearing, and at the conclusion of the hearing, adopt the resolution in order approving the annexation into THPRD, with the annexation becoming effective today, November 4th. If there is any public testimony today, there is a brief statement I will need to read into the record.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any questions on the staff presentation? Thank you. Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing on this item. Clerk Moss?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I did not see anyone sign up in advance for this public hearing. Is there any member in the auditorium that wish to provide public comment on this public hearing, as you've heard from staff? Not seeing where his hands are come forward. Is there any member on Zoom that wish to provide public comment for up to two minutes? Give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss, and with that, I will close today's public hearing and ask for a motion to adopt the resolution in order approving the annexation with the approval becoming effective November 4th, 2025, and authorize the Chair to sign the resolution in order for the Service District Annexation 25-007. Move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Thank you for being here. Next, we'll move on to four very important action items. The first one comes to us from Clean Water Services, and at this juncture, I'd like to turn the mic over to our interim Chief Executive Officer, General Manager, Rick Shanley. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Well, this is a major milestone for Clean Water Services to adopt the West Basin Master Plan, so we have a presentation. I'm going to turn it over to staff, ask them to introduce themselves and share the information.
Yeah, good morning, Directors and Chair. My name is Josh Johnson. I'm a principal engineer with our Treatment Plan Services Group. With me, I have Wade Denny, he's the manager for the Conveyance Engineering Division, and we're here to talk about the West Basin Master Plan. Okay, yeah, next side, please. So the West Basin is home to more than 400,000 residents. It's portions of Banks, Cornelius, Forest Grove, Gaston, Hillsborough, North Plains, as well as portions of Beaverton and Washington County. The figure here shows Clean Water Services District Boundary, as well as our East and West Basins. The West Basin is in that kind of green-yellow color. In terms of sanitary and sewer infrastructure, there are three water resource recovery facilities. In terms of sanitary and sewer infrastructure, there are three water resource recovery facilities, Rock Creek, Forest Grove, and Hillsborough, as well as over 1,000 miles of sewer mains, interceptors, and trunks, and 28 pump stations within the West Basin. Next slide, please. So why do a master plan? So the West Basin Master Plan is a roadmap for upgrading and expanding Clean Water Services' treatment and conveyance infrastructure. It helps us understand where growth will occur, how much growth is expected, and when, how does CWS address aging infrastructure, and how does CWS adapt to regulatory resilience and climate change impacts. The way to kind of read this figure is from the bottom up. So we begin by understanding the characteristics and growth in the basin and projecting future flows. We then use that information to evaluate alternatives to address our infrastructure, and then from that, we develop our capital improvement program. Next slide, please. So the planning process begins with identifying needs. The West Basin Master Plan is a year-by-year plan through the year 2045, so 20 years out. We also do a build-out forecast for long-term needs in order to understand kind of beyond 2020, 2045, where we go, and make sure we don't kind of box ourselves in. We develop growth forecasts for population, business, and industry in coordination with cities. This is really our understanding of the when, where, and how much of growth. From that, we estimate the future flows and loads using those population forecasts and data on our existing system and our understanding of what comes in through our conveyance infrastructure into our resource recovery facilities. Then we use computer simulations of the conveyance system and treatment processes to determine when those future flows and loads will exceed our current capacity to convey and treat them. Next slide, please. So we identify and evaluate these potential solutions and develop preliminary and lifecycle costs for each of those. So the figure on the right here shows kind of what's considered in developing solutions. So we look at the capital costs for an initial project. We also look at the lifecycle costs of that project over its service life, as well as considering non-cost factors. And we're really looking for the optimum of capital and lifecycle costs, as well as those non-cost factors. So what gives us essentially the best bang for our buck? So those are, those potential solutions are scored and ranked on those non-cost criteria, and then we select a preferred alternative. Refined estimates are then what are used to develop our CIP, and then along the way, we're incorporating regulatory changes, as well as chances to increase our seismic and climate resiliency. Next slide, please. So outcomes. On the conveyance side, there are approximately $920 million in projects through 2045. This includes major multi-faceted pipeline projects for the Turner Creek, Beaverton, Dawson, and Lower Rock Creek trunks. There are also major pump station upgrades to the Dawson pump station, as well as a new Council Creek pump station. And then kind of throughout the, throughout the planning period, there are ongoing influ- infiltration abatement and pipeline rehab programs, and ongoing coordination and projects with our co-implementer cities for additional projects. On the treatment side, there are a little under $500 million in projects through 2045. This includes major capacity and rehab projects at all three water resource recoveries facilities. And then as part of this, part of the plan, we also develop site plans for each facility in order to manage our future use of space at the site, and again, make sure we don't box ourselves in by, by building something where we need space in the future for, for another project. Next slide, please. We've incorporated outreach and communication throughout the process. So we met with the Clean Water Services Advisory Commission four times over the course of the West Basin Master Plan project. There was also a separate CWA subcommittee focused on the West Basin Master Plan. We met with them separately three times. We had a work session with, with the board in July of 2045, and then the co-implementer cities reviewed the draft plan and provided comments. So some next steps there. We have additional meetings with the cities coming up focused on project implementation. And we also do an annual check-in on the project, on the, on the plan, excuse me, to see how we're doing relative to the growth projections, then update any project timeline. So the idea is this is really a living plan that we continue to, continue to assess and develop until it's time to, to renew the whole plan. Next slide, please. So CWA unanimously recommended at its June 2025 meeting to, that the board adopt the West Basin Master Plan. Staff at Banks, Beaverton, Cornelius, Forest Grove, Gaston, Hillsborough, North Plains, and Washington County have all reviewed the, the draft plan and provide feedback that was incorporated into the final plan. So our request to the board today is to approve the resolution in order to adopt the West Basin Master Plan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Denny, is there anything else you would like to add, even if it's simply to let us know of that one thing that you're most proud of in this proposed West Basin Master Plan?
You know, these processes really require just a lot of people coming together to get to this point. So I just want to commend Mr. Johnson here and his work and effort to get us here, and also Mr. Shanley's leadership to also bring us here, and the board as well, to help us, support us, to get us to the table today to present this to you all. So just thank, thank everybody and just all the people that make these fun things happen.
Board members, do you have any questions or comments? Yes, please start us off.
I just want to recognize the amount of work and that this is a culmination, and we, we get the benefit, the community get the benefit of the result or the information at a point in time that then is going to evolve over time, but it represents just a huge amount of work on both the Clean Water Services team and our co-implementers and others. So I want to recognize that and also just point out for our community who frequently has questions about why rates are the way they are, or why there's a certain amount of reserves that Clean Water Services may be carrying, and I want to make the connection between these plans and the capital project needs and the fact that much of what needs to be done over the next 30 years, or 20 to 30 years, requires significant capital investment. And this is one of the plans that helps outline what needs to happen and when, as you pointed out. So thank you for all that, and I do want to make those connections for the community.
Any other board members? Commissioner Feig, your light's on.
I think it was on from previously, Chair. But thank you for your presentation, and I do agree with what Commissioner Snyder said. This is a critical investment. I was just doing the number add-up when you were presenting that slide, and that is $1.4 billion investment that's going into Washington County and to our residents. So that, thank you.
Any other directors?
Yeah, just real quickly, the, the importance of this can't be understated in that it's a 20-year snapshot. We know that this industry is constantly evolving, new challenges, new expectations from the people you serve, but also just the new demands on other regulatory demands, I guess, that you have to meet. So this is really, really important. So congratulations on this. Good job.
Yes, thank you.
Director, Teresa?
Again, my thanks, and I second what everybody else here says. I also want to emphasize the tie with the East Basin Plan and the fact that together we really have a great roadmap. So thank you.
Thank you. I want to join my colleagues in congratulating our staff for a job well done, and I particularly want to thank you for the very effective executive summary, but I am getting ahead of myself. I first wanted to say that water flows into all of our buildings here in Washington County, and it similarly flows out of all of those buildings, and that's where our work as Clean Water Services comes in. I really commend this basin approach. Our board learned a lot through the development of the East Basin Master Plan and has made us that much more knowledgeable to be on the journey for this West Basin Master Plan. You've really executed a very thoughtful work with members throughout our community, and your planning excellence. So thank you, yes, and congratulations. Ah, and as I was getting ahead of myself, on the executive summary, it complements the full multi-hundred page of document that makes up the master plan, but this executive summary, I want to thank you, all of you, for the very consumable information that is in the summary document. And I hope I will be following up to make sure it's readily findable on, on our website and so forth. But you've made sure it's consumable by our community members, our ratepayers, whether they're residents, businesses, or industry. Job well done. I would also like to invite every Clean Water Services employee who is here today after we take action on this to join us in a picture-taking opportunity to memorialize this great accomplishment. So congratulations, but with that, I would ask for a motion from the board to adopt the Clean Water Services West Basin Master Plan.
I enthusiastically move that we adopt the West Basin Master Plan.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, board members. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously five to zero. So please, let's memorialize this accomplishment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next action is specific to Washington County, and this is the annual presentation and our acceptance of the Washington County Administrative Manual and updates to the administrative policies since our last board review. Not sure, who kicks it off?
I will kick it off, Chair Harrington. Tanya Angie, County Administrator, and Erin Calvert, Assistant County Administrator, will be joining, joining me in this presentation. I want to take, take us back a few years ago. Shortly after I started with the county, Brad Anderson, who was with our county council office, brought a concern to me that in, in our code, the county administrator is supposed to present an administrative manual to the board. We learned that the interpretation at that time of the code was a one-page org chart. That didn't really meet the spirit of the code of what an administrative manual is. So the administrative, the purpose of the administrative manual is to outline the departments, the roles, the structure of the organization, and we have evolved that to also include our administrative policies. I have now been with the county over five years, and I've shared this before, that we have administrative policies that have, are woefully out of date, and we have not had a business process or business rhythm and cadence to update those on a routine basis. So what we are presenting to you now is the start of that commitment to updating our policies on a three-year basis and providing that lens of transparency as well. So today, next slide, please. We will walk through point-in-time process update, grounding of county code 2.04, summary of the updates, summary of the org chart, and review of the administrative manual and questions, and then requested action for the board. Next slide. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Calvert at this point.
Great, thank you, Ms. Angie, and good morning, Chair Harrington and Board of Commissioners. Tanya did such a great recap in the beginning that I'm just going to dive right in and tell you kind of where we're at right now. So again, as she mentioned, the purpose of today's presentation is to bring your board the administrative manual and then some summary changes, really high level, for the administrative policies for 2025. Just last month, with the assistance of ACA Ann Ober and our finance CFO, John Steyer and Sarah Keen, we sent your board a memo that outlined our proposed plan moving forward. And so that really outlined what Tanya just mentioned. The administrative manual and administrative policy review will occur annually, and we will be moving that in perpetuity to July after the budget is adopted. Financial policies are, will be coming to you before your board at a roundtable in January. And then a reminder that financial policies will be adopted by your Board of Commissioners annually in June, connected to also the budget process.
And Ms. Calvert, just as for members of the public, we will be implementing, proposing to your board several new financial policies, and these new financial policies are aimed to align with GFOA best practice. GFOA stands for the Government Finance Officers Association. So we look forward to moving towards best practice in our finance practice.
And then noted on the slide, the administrative manual being annually reviewed by your board. We want to provide just an awareness of our internal process that Tanya is kind of talking about. And so with COVID and all of the things that have happened recently, we've fallen a little bit behind in our review process, and now we're recognizing that we need to prioritize those into getting into a cycle and a routine. So we're, we will be reviewing all of these policies across the next three years. This will ensure, again, just a manageable process and that just to know the first couple of years we're coming back to you, it'll be a little out of sync as we get everything into cycle, and then in three years, we should be magically on a really great cycle. Okay, so this slide reminds you of your board's action that you took on November 19 of 2024 when your board adopted ordinance 904. The amended Washington County Code, Section 2.04.100, delegates approval, revisions, and repeal of administrative policies from the board to the county administrator. This section notes that all administrative policies and procedures should be incorporated within the administrative manual as is described in Section 2.04.110. And then ordinance 904 made changes to that same code section, which provides for the annual review and consideration of an administrative manual that prescribes, as Tanya mentioned in her opening, the title of each head of department and the duties and responsibilities of each head of department, and then provides a summary of the administrative policy and procedure changes. This slide provides those summary policy updates and procedure updates that are all included in your packet. I'll go over them really quickly. Policy 101 and Procedure 101A were updated to reflect the very changes we are, we've just been telling you about. There are several policies listed in Section 2 on the slide included in your packet, and these changes to the policies weren't substantive. They were really just involving high-level language changes that were made to align with the board-adopted Access and Opportunity Resolution. So these include all the policies listed and procedures, 201, 201A, 205A, 206, 207, 207A, 210, 211, 211A, 211B, 212, 212A, 607, and 607A. Moving on to number three on your slide, Policy 305 was amended and Procedure 305A was created to ensure compliance with the state and federal legal changes to the Americans with Disabilities Act, or ADA, and we put in some clarifying language that was also added for the benefit of employees. Policy 505 was not changed, however, there was an exception that was approved on July 10 of 2025 that allows sworn parole and probation officers in the community corrections for, for, and 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 and I'll review those summary changes on this next slide. If I can get the clicker to work, there we go. The language updates to the administrative manual include language updates to align with the Access and Opportunity Resolution. We also just corrected typographical, grammatical, and other similar type errors. And then, we made updates to the ITS department duties to align with the other departments. In terms of department updates that were made visible on the org chart, the Office of Access and Opportunity was aligned under the county administrative office. We realigned the Office of Emergency Management under General Government as it is a standalone office. Parks moved under the Functional Area of Culture, Education, and Recreation. Westside Commons also moved to the Functional Area of Culture, Education, and Recreation. And then, Economic Development and Sustainability Departments were eliminated from the county administrative office to reflect the fiscal year '26 budget decisions. And then, of course, as mentioned, your board delegated the authority to approve, amend, repeal policies to the county administrator. And those were updated and reflected in the code. So, in summary and moving forward, the annual administrative manual and administrative policy review will be in July. Financial policies, as Tanya mentioned, will be coming before your board at the roundtable in January. And then, those policies will be presented to you and adopted as part of the budget process in June. We are working on internal processes that will help ensure ongoing and manageable reviewing of policies. And those will be brought to you annually in the manual. And we're working to get all of those kind of set up on a regular cadence. So, oops, too far this time, apologies. Happy to answer any questions? Wondering if your board does have any questions just about the review period being proposed and then asking your board to accept the administrative manual for 2025?
Commissioners, any questions or comments?
This falls under the "we don't know what we didn't know." And so, this has certainly closed the loop. This is very comprehensive, so it's a very good snapshot. Thank you very much for your work on this.
Thank you. It's a great team working on this.
Anyone else? I would like to thank you, Ms. Angie, for your leadership to ensure that we are a continuously improving county government. It has required our patience to see that these, the entire processes, all the policies, would be back on track for an updated renewal and check-in. As we learned years ago, that the direction in each policy, that this will be revisited, for example, every three years or four years, was not done. So, thank you for, and to your direct leadership staff joining you in making sure that we're being very diligent and deliberate as well as having us on a path to practice those best practices in the industry. Thank you. At this juncture, I would like to ask for a motion to accept the administrative manual for 2025. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Next, we will move on to our first of two proposed emergency, state of emergencies. The first is to declare a state of emergency for the disruption of Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or SNAP, benefits. I'd like to thank Commissioner Snyder and Commissioner Willie for taking the lead on these two items. And turn it over to Commissioner Snyder. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. Last week at our roundtable, we had a discussion about the evolving situations in the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program funding and had some general agreement that we were going to bring a matter before the commission today, declaring a state of emergency regarding the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. We have a resolution and order in front of us. I'm going to highlight some key points to it. Included in the resolution and order are a declaration that the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or SNAP, serves as a critical lifeline for thousands of Washington County residents, helping families, seniors, and individuals afford nutritious food and maintain stability during times of economic hardship, and that more than 720,000 Oregonians, including 57,000 residents of Washington County, rely on SNAP benefits to meet their basic nutritional needs. Additionally, food insecurity is a public health issue that affects educational outcomes, workforce productivity, and long-term community well-being. And it is the responsibility of local government to respond with compassion and urgency in times of need. Further, the resolution and order includes that the Board of Commissioners for Washington County will formally declare a state of emergency for Washington County effective on the fourth day of November 2025, and further delegates to the county administrator authority to authorize expenditures under the emergency declaration in the amount of up to $250,000 to combat food insecurity due to the elimination or reduction in SNAP benefits in Washington County. I want to make a brief comment about the fact that we are choosing, by making this declaration and assuming we approve this, we are choosing to spend money from our reserves. And that's not a decision that we take lightly. I think we look at the situation very seriously and the threat to our community and the most vulnerable people in our community, and are therefore making this decision now at one point in time. And that is where the funding comes from. It is not just money we have sitting around.
So, at this juncture, I'd like to open the floor for any questions or comments from commissioners. Go ahead, Commissioner Threes.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I want to thank both Commissioners Snyder and Commissioner Willie for, along with General Counsel, for the work that was done here. I think it's very important that we support this resolution. Food insecurity is a real thing in Washington County. We also recognize that this action does not eliminate food insecurity, but we are doing our best to make sure that we can be a partner with others in addressing this issues. I also want to make the statement that I am deeply disappointed and concerned about the federal government and the position that the federal government has put our local agencies in to require this type of action. This is not what our reserves have ever been intended for, but we stand ready to support our communities when needed. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, Chair, I'll jump in to say I'm in support of this declaration. I will be supporting and voting aye. I will say that, you know, there are two things happening that's driving this food situation that's going on in Washington County. One is the ICE raids that's happening. People are afraid to go out of their houses to go to the groceries. Therefore, kids are starving. People are not going to work, so they're not making money. Therefore, they don't have money to go buy foods. And then, we have the federal administration shutdown and HR-1 impact. So, this is really a terrible situation for residents in Washington County. While this action is something, it's better than nothing. I do think that $250,000 is better than nothing, but it doesn't really address what's the situation that's unfolding for our residents here. But it is something that is going to at least put food to certain community members, while we might not reach all of them. So, I will be supporting because it's better than nothing. But this conversation, from what I understand, you know, from our work session, is to be continued and wait for the forecast, that Washington County conversation that's going to happen around our budget. And I will continue to push for more resources. I firmly believe, and I came to this country as a refugee myself and utilized county services, I do think government is, especially, all government, I would say, but biased here as a local government elected, that government should be there for the people when in most needs. And this is this time. This is when you need your local government to step up for you and help you. Maybe, you know, this morning, we've had a conversation, and I said, government, you know, we should save our people. Maybe that's the wrong terminology, but I will say, help. Maybe it's a better fit for it. Government should help the people it serves. We are all elected by the very residents that we're talking about being starved, by the very people. Our kids go to school with the kids we're talking about that do not have food and can't go to school because parents are afraid. So, I share, you know, the urgencies. I'm sorry to say this is the best we can do for now, but it's to be continued. Keep pushing, make your voices heard. This is happening because of your voices here today, because a lot of people are expressing concerns. So, keep pushing us, and we'll be there.
Commissioner Willie, is there anything you'd like to please restore order?
No, not this time. I will respond to the declaration coming up next. But I am in support of this initial declaration on the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program.
Yes, thank you very much, and I join you in that. At this juncture, Commissioner Snyder, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, please. I'd like to declare a state of emergency to address community needs because of a disruption of the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program benefits.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Next, we'll move on to declaring a state of emergency for federal immigration enforcement. Commissioner Willie?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Snyder, for recapping the conversation that we had last week. It also included a declaration of emergency regarding the federal immigration enforcement. It was a good conversation, and I want to say also thank you to the individuals that came and testified before us last week. We heard you, and we appreciate the passion that you have for this. And we wanted to commit ourselves to doing, to having the same passion to do what we possibly could, and hence, why we have these two emergency declarations. I'm going to read a portion of these declarations, not its entirety, but a close part of it. Whereas 404,200 immigrants live in Oregon, representing about 1 in 10 Oregonians, and immigrants make up 18% of Oregon's workforce. Whereas over 104,000 people born outside the United States reside in Washington County, making up 17% of the county's population. And whereas these immigrant neighbors, coworkers, classmates are a vital piece of the fabric of Washington County community. Whereas recent data from the state of Oregon shows a significant negative impact to the immigrants' health and well-being, such as anxiety, sleeplessness, and worsening health due to the fear of being targeted, detained, or simply looking or sounding like an immigrant. Whereas increased immigration enforcement within Washington County has caused residents to fear leaving their homes to go to work or school, take public transportation, access county services, and attend medical appointments and other necessary daily activities. Current federal immigration activity appears designed to instill fear and anxiety in the residents of Washington County. So, be it resolved and ordered that upon declaration of the state of emergency, the Board of Commissioners shall be authorized to take such actions and issue such orders as determined to be necessary to protect the public and property consistent with local, state, and federal law. It is also ordered and resolved that the county administrator is delegated authority to authorize expenditures under this emergency declaration in the amount of up to $200,000 to support immigrants and refugees in Washington County. We have appointed, we have authorized the CAO Angie the discretion on when and how to utilize effective, the effective impact of this money to support our immigrants and our refugees, to put the money in the hands of the organizations with the expertise to have, ensure maximum benefit to the immigrants and refugees in Washington County.
Clarification, when and how between now and the end of the calendar year?
Yes, I'm sorry, I should have done that.
It's okay.
So, yes, we are authorizing this to, this resolution will expire on December 31st, and the CAO will be required to report back to the commission by January 31st.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie, for presenting that. Now, I would like to turn the floor over to the full board for any questions or comments.
I think it's important in context to just recognize what this current action does and does not do. This is recognizing that there is an emergency. It's interesting that there is a line in here that describes current federal immigration activity appearing to be designed to instill fear and anxiety in the residents of Washington County. And I would be remiss in my job if I did not point out that I believe that's literally the definition of terrorism in the dictionary. So, I'm going to state that. And with that said, it, again, is important to recognize that we are not, we are not directing our, for example, law enforcement resources, local law enforcement resources, to do things that would be illegal. And that's really important because we do have an obligation to follow federal law, and that is described here. So, I want to make sure that the expectations of the community are aligned with what we are actually considering.
Anyone else?
I can jump in. I do, will support this state of emergency being declared in Washington County in regards to the ICE raids. I do think that this action is a necessary action to take today, and it's an opportunity to unlock resources, to accelerate response efforts in our community, especially what's coming out of the ICE raids, and ensure that our community receives the legal assistance that it deserves. And I hope that we direct these funding to that. And I will say, as I said at the other declaration, you know, these amounts are not enough, but nothing is better than anything at this point. This action, it's also not optional. It is only the responsible step to protect the lives and the long-term well-being of our community. I want to be clear, however, while this declaration is an important step, it does not go far enough. We're not using all the tools and all the tools in our toolbox to help our community, to entertain the idea of rent evictions for residential and commercial. We've seen the articles in the news about minority business owners are being impacted in Washington County, and residents are impacted. If people are not going to work, who's going to pay their rent? I mentioned this morning, shut-offs. You know, other jurisdictions are considering to suspend some shut-offs, water shut-offs. So, I do think that this two conversation is to be continued because there are other tools in our toolbox that we can help residents. The situation the community faces demands continued aggressive action to safeguard our residents. And I do agree that we cannot afford complicity, complicity. I've worked I mentioned this morning, shut-offs, you know, other jurisdictions are considering to suspend some shut-offs, water shut-offs. So, I do think that this too conversation is to be continued because there are other tools in our toolbox that we can help residents. The situation the community faces demands continued aggressive action to safeguard our residents, and I do agree that we cannot afford complicity, complicity. I've worked hard to elevate this issue and ensure it receives the attention it's required. It is a reflection of my commitment to the people of this county and to the urgency of this moment. We need every leader and every community partner fully engaged in this topic. This is a moment that calls for focus, responsibility, and continued bold decision-making. I will continue to push for additional measures necessary to protect our community, and I encourage others to do the same. This moment demands our leadership, demands however way we can protect the community, however way we can speak. You know, there are people who are not a minority, who are stepping up to pick up kits for other people because people are being profiled. If that is not, if that doesn't, that sits with you correctly, then we have a problem in our society. We have to come together and say, what ICE is doing is absolutely unacceptable, and demand local government, county, cities, to step up in a way that is beyond performative, in a way that has an impact for everyone, in a way that calms the disruption that's happening in Washington County streets. So, I will be supporting this, but again, this conversation is to be continued.
Thank you, Commissioner Phi. Next to you, Vice Chair Trese.
Thank you, Chair. Let's make no mistake about it, the activity that we've seen from ICE in recent weeks is horrific. When masked agents are grabbing people off the street, families are being torn apart without due process, this really isn't who we are as a community. Washington County prides itself on our diversity and the fact that so many of our residents feel unsafe currently is unacceptable. I've been out in our community a lot recently, and most recently in the city of Cornelius, where I talked with individuals who are experiencing this firsthand, and it is absolutely horrific, and there's no question in my mind that this is an emergency. I'm very proud to join my colleagues today in declaring a state of emergency around these federal enforcement operations and providing funding to support our immigrant populations. I also believe that by funding organizations that are closest to those who are experiencing these problems will be our best approach here, and I'm grateful that we have organizations in our community that do so. It's challenging right now to have such limited opportunities to fight this. I understand and agree with Commissioner Phi about the range of tools we may have. They are still small in relationship to the problem. I, I'm sure that is shared by many on this board as well. This is an action that we can and must take, and I can and must continue to use my voice as well as others to oppose this activity. I want to thank Commissioner Phi for elevating this issue, to our board, and to Commissioners Snyder and Willie for moving it forward along with our general counsel. I also want to state that I stand with all of our community in rejecting these un-American tactics.
Thank you, Commissioner Trese. And before I close, I would, and make my own comments, I would like to ask if Ms. Angie would like to make any clarifications for the record.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate, as always, the trust and confidence that the board places in me, and I do not take that lightly. For that, for that fact, if your board does move forward with this expenditure of $200,000, I would be following up with you next week on what the plans for that expenditure are, and to ensure that that has your support. There is, as many of you have already spoke to, there is more need in this community than $200,000, and as I hear your comments, you are reflecting that as well. And so, I think it is important that prior to the authorization of the $200,000, that I do get your board's continued guidance in this because of the needs that we have in our community. I also want to underscore, in both of these emergency declarations, and this is in the cover memo, we are using contingency or reserves. That takes us below our policy and reserve targets. That is important to note because on Thursday during your board roundtable, you will be presented with our budget forecast. As your board knows, we do not have a stable budget forecast, and so we are already going into a cuts budget. So, any additional funds that you dedicate out of reserves would need to be replaced in this upcoming budget year. So, I just want to make sure that's known publicly. That is not a reason to not do this, but it is just the facts of financial management. And more will come on Thursday, what that means, and that will, that will be adequately documented, too. So, thanks for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. So first, I want to thank Commissioner Snyder and Commissioner Willie for working with our county council to bring this matter forward to, subsequent to our conversation, and noting, as you did, the community concern that we've all had the opportunity to hear in a variety of forms, including here in our own business meetings. I want to say thank you in advance to our staff for helping us put together a release to help our community members know what this action does and does not do, as compared to specific requests from various community members. Clarification is needed. I want to express my support for public servants throughout our country, our state, and locally here in Washington County to ensure that they continue to keep doing their jobs lawfully and to follow lawful practices. That includes supporting lawful immigration, and this goes back to earlier testimony that we heard. It is very disappointing to me that our federal administration has chosen to remove protective, temporary protective status for so many contributing members of our community, immigrants and refugees, and the effects to our community of the various isolated ICE activities, as Commissioner Trese mentioned, are horrific. I thank you, commissioners, as I have noted, for putting this forward and for continuing to do what we are able to do in this moment, and I will be supporting this action. Do we have a motion to adopt the action to declare a state of emergency? Excuse me, I need to turn to the right page. In the matter of declaring a state of emergency regarding federal immigration and enforcement?
Second.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand and saying aye, or saying aye. Any opposed, the motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we'll move on to our second public communication opportunity of this meeting. This is an opportunity for members of our community to come and testify before the board for up to five minutes, an individual 30 minutes total. Clerk Mas, who do we have to do so today?
Thank you, Chair. The first two we have is Bob Seward, followed by Stephanie Davidson. She'll follow you, so she'll be right up after you.
You signed up ahead of me.
Excuse me, Seward. Go ahead, Mr. Seward.
Thank you for the opportunity to give my comments to you. My name's Robert Seward. I'm a resident of Forest Grove, retired physician, 43 years in practice medicine. I'm board certified, and those are my credentials. And today, I want to talk about the COVID epidemic and maybe learning some lessons of the mistakes we made. Recently, a book came out, it's called Science Under Siege, and it's written by Michael Mann, who is a distinguished professor of environmental science, and Peter Hotez. He's dean of the National School of Tropical Medicine, professor of pediatrics, molecular virology, microbiology at Baylor College of Medicine. He's the collector of Texas Children's Center for Vaccine Development. And on page 56 of his recent book, he says, "In all, 100,000 Texans died because of COVID during the pandemic, making Texas among the worst-affected states in the nation in terms of total numbers of deaths. As Peter reported in 2022, almost one-half of those deaths, at least 40,000, were unnecessary because of so many Texans refused COVID immunization that were extremely 90% effective at preventing death. Anti-vaccine activism became a leading cause of death in the state of Texas, which had become an epicenter of the anti-vaccine movement, thanks to the financing of anti-vaccine causes and pacts." Now, it's, the industry of disinformation and anti-science is still alive and functioning. We have Fox News, this, with their giant system, we have Right Wing Radio, and then we also have MDs, medical physicians who have license, who are what I would call dangerous doctors. Now, there's three that I have in particular that testified to confirm RFK as the CDC Director, Senator Roger Marshall, OB-GYN, Senator Barasso of Wyoming, orthopedic surgeon, Senator Cassidy, gastroenterologist. They all met with RFK. They all knew that his denial of vaccine effectiveness led to the deaths of children in Samoa. They all voted to confirm him, and that goes against their oath of office. So, what is the average person to believe? Who can they trust? Here's our doctors telling, going along with this information, a whole industry. I think that who you can trust is, I boiled it down to about six or seven sources that I think the average person can trust for information about vaccines. Your pharmacist, number two, your providers, your physician, your PA, your nurse practitioner, if you're lucky enough to have a physician, your health department, your state health department, with the exception of Florida. And it used to be the CDC, and now we have the Fox and the Hen House, we have RFK, your medical schools, medical journals like JAMA, New England Journal of Medicine, the medical associations, and then finally, I think, the Mayo Clinic and the Cleveland Clinic website. These are all reliable sources of information, and so that's what the average person can do, because there's a whole industry out there of disinformation and propaganda, confusing people. So, that's my comment. Oh, I've got one second left. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Seward. Next, you're on.
Chair Harrington and county commissioners, my name is Stephanie Davidson, and I am an Oak Hills resident. My comments concern the Cornell Road transitional housing property, or project, sorry, I'm very nervous. Before I go any further, I want to say that my husband is an addict in recovery. He has nine years of sobriety. He owns and operates an addiction treatment center, and my comments are not about addicts in recovery in general. I strongly support the efforts the county is making to build out housing for addicts in recovery. My comments are only about the county potentially placing dangerous people at this facility. At this point, it looks like the county knew in late 2024 that it intended to implement a transitional housing facility at this location. The first reference I could find to this project was in the minutes for the Housing Authority Board of Directors, which was on January 28th of this year. This agenda item was titled, "Approve the Housing Authority designation as assini under a Central City Concern Purchase and Sale Agreement." Neither this agenda item nor the attached staff report references that the real estate being purchased by the county was on Cornell Road or anywhere near our neighborhood, yet of course, the county knew that's where it was. There was nothing in these materials that would have suggested to anyone in our neighborhood that the county government intended on implementing transitional housing right next door to us, and by intentionally concealing the true nature of this project for so long, the county denied us, your constituents, a meaningful opportunity to have input into this process at a time when it mattered. Our neighborhood did not figure out what was happening until after the county had purchased this property, and of course, I understand now that the county has spent millions of dollars on this property, and it's too late to change the trajectory of the project. But again, county residents were not given an opportunity to have input into this process at a time when it mattered. That is my concern. Again, I'm not opposed to transitional housing going in at this location. I'm talking about the lack of transparent public process. Now, we are often told, wait for the Good Neighbor Agreement. While I have reviewed the Good Neighbor Agreements on the county's websites, and they are essentially behavior policies, they say things such as no loitering, and they require that the operator of this facility keep up the landscaping in good condition. Our concern is that the county will place dangerous people at this facility and that one of our residents, or maybe one of our children, will be harmed. Ensuring that residents do not loiter and that the landscaping looks nice does not address our concern. We have very specifically requested that people with a long history of violent person-to-person crimes and people who are deemed sex offenders who are level three or level two, so they're deemed to be at a high risk of reoffense by a parole officer, or at a moderate risk to reoffend by a parole officer, that these people are categorically denied access to this facility. We've repeatedly made these requests, only to get dismissed over and over again with the same talking points. It's either state or federal laws disallow the county from implementing these restrictions, or outcomes are better for residents when there are no barriers to entry. And I'd like to understand your analysis. Please tell me what laws you are referring to, Chair Harrington. A staff member once insinuated to us that a grant agreement term disallowed the county from performing background checks. Well, again, I would like to understand what those grant terms are and where they come from. Is it Metro grant funding agreements? I feel like we deserve to know. And county staff have recently referred to data demonstrating better outcomes for facility residents when background checks are not used. So, again, we want to ask for this data. The FAQ that was published on October 20th refers to a memorandum that was actually proposed and withdrawn by HUD. The portions of the document quoted in the county's FAQ appear to be a description of HUD's statutory authority to pass that rule. It is not an authoritative source regarding best practices and what is and is not allowed under federal law. So, I'm wondering, how is it possible that the county is ignoring reasonable concerns from its county residents while also basing its decision-making on this kind of information, misrepresenting it as data? It is not data, it is a withdrawn federal rule that, again, is not a rule at this point. Why does the county feel that the interests of future residents at this facility and the agenda of the Housing Department automatically outweigh our interests in community safety? So, I have to ask you, why do you think it's totally acceptable to ignore our concerns about our safety and our children's safety? And would you want a person who has a long history of person-to-person crimes, or someone who's deemed at a high risk to reoffend when they're a sex offender? Would you want this kind of person living right next door to you? I recognize that there are dangerous people in the world, and we cannot control that. The difference here is that the county will be taking affirmative action to place these people at this facility. I have no issue with this facility being used for addiction treatment support, but as I just explained- treatment support, but as I just explained, I am still unaware of even one good reason why the county cannot perform background checks and implement reasonable restrictions on entry. Our concerns matter, and they should matter to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davidson. I'm going to take the extraordinary extent to assert and make it clear that we, on the Board of Commissioners, are not ignoring anyone's concerns. So assertions of that matter, to me, are very hurtful and false. I want to understand these very same questions, too, but I actually have to work at the speed of government. I can totally relate that the speed of government is slower than you would like. I agree with that. It's slower than I would like to. But nonetheless, we are a county government, and we have a lot of different things that we need to move on simultaneously, and we are trying to do our best. Welcome on the journey, and I remain hopeful that we will get there together. But it will take some time. Thank you. Next, we have... Who do we have next?
We have Megan Hill and Jill Latre.
Welcome, Ms. Hill. You may go ahead.
My name is Megan Hill, and I serve as the Board President for the Oak Hills Homeowners' Association, representing more than 650 homes and families located just steps from the proposed Cornell Road Transitional Housing Facility. Let me be very direct. Oak Hills formally opposes this project in its current form. Until there are legally binding and forcible safety precautions, this facility poses an unacceptable risk to the safety, security, and well-being of our community, particularly to the hundreds of children who live, walk, and play within 500 feet of this site, including my own. Last week, two of my neighbors and I met with Chair Harrington and Commissioner Therese. What intended to be a constructive dialogue quickly became a lecture. After we introduced ourselves, Chair Harrington spoke for 12 minutes straight before anyone else could respond. From the outset, the tone was defensive, political, and dismissive. Chair Harrington described the project as, quote, "no wrong-door approach." But when pressed for specifics on public safety, she deflected, saying, "I am not a walking encyclopedia." Later, when I asked, "Who represents the voice of our community in this process?" Chair Harrington replied, "We are your elected officials. That's our responsibility. With respect, representation requires listening, not lecturing." Throughout the meeting, our concerns were repeatedly minimized. I told Chair Harrington directly that we did not feel listened to, and the tone of the discussion felt defensive and not collaborative. Her response was, and I quote, "I'm sorry that you didn't hear my suggestions." Commissioner Therese tried to smooth things over, saying jokingly, "This is why we're here together." That remark, though likely well-intentioned, underscored the deeper issue. The county continues to treat this as a messaging problem rather than a public safety crisis. Chair Harrington spoke at length about what she called "different solutions in different places" and the county's continuum of care. Yet she also admitted that the county is still, in her own words, trying to figure that out. That contradiction, claiming both deep experience and total uncertainty, only reinforces why this project, as proposed, cannot move forward responsibly. Our frustration is rooted in inconsistent, inaccurate, and misleading information from the county and its staff. One county communication claimed "Classification III and most classification II sex offenders are already prohibited from living near parks, schools, and childcare locations." That statement is false. Under OAR 255-060-0009, retitled "Residence Requirements for Certain Sex Offenders Upon Release From Custody," a sex offender classified as a sexually violent, dangerous offender, or predatory sex offender, may not reside near locations where children are their primary occupants or users. However, and this is critical, the rule explicitly states, "This prohibition applies to permanent housing, not transitional housing." Furthermore, Section 3 allows probation officers to grant exceptions, even for permanent housing, based on vague criteria such as enhanced supervision or temporary housing needs. In other words, high-risk offenders, including those classified as predatory or sexually violent, can legally be placed in transitional housing near schools and parks if their supervising officer approves it. The law allows it, yet the county continues to tell residents the opposite, creating a false sense of security. Our position is clear, reasonable, and unwavering. Mandatory background checks for all residents, staff, and volunteers. Categorical exclusion of violent and sexual offenders. 24/7 onsite professional security and surveillance. An enforceable good neighbor agreement, co-signed by the county with accountability and dedicated funding for safety measures. Public reporting of safety incidents and transparent oversight. Those are not extreme demands. They are basic safeguards any responsible government should embrace. Oak Hills has now prepared a petition outlining these reasonable asks. We've already received strong support from residents, local businesses, and neighboring communities who share our grave concerns. Let me be absolutely clear. Since our elected officials appear unwilling to prioritize community safety, Oak Hills will. We will continue organizing, engaging local partners, and taking every necessary step to protect our neighborhood, our families, and our schools. We support compassion, but compassion without accountability is negligence. We support recovery, but recovery cannot come at the expense of community safety. We will not be silenced. We will not be ignored, and we will not stand by while safety takes a backseat to politics. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Ms. Latre, please go ahead.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. My name is Jill Latre, a 30-plus-year resident of Washington County. Last week, I and several of the elected officials that regularly attend the board meetings had a conflict with another meeting. I signed up to speak online, but unfortunately, experienced some connection problems. I want to thank and appreciate that Clerk Maz took the time to communicate what happened. Today is Election Day. I will be talking about our ballots and the tally of votes. During public testimony on October 21st, a challenge was given to examine all the QR codes for the various voting members in your household. Did anyone take the challenge? Just as I did during May, I brought all the ballots from my household. Each ballot has a different QR code, a unique identifier. Each ballot contains voter-specific information. The Oregon Voter Bill of Rights reads, "You have the right to a secret vote. You do not have to tell anyone how you voted." The Secretary of State website states, "The ballots, which contain no voter-specific identifying information, are tabulated only after they are separated from the return envelopes." Secretary of State Tobias Reed claims that our privacy is very important, and to protect voter privacy, he will not comply with federal laws and share Oregon's voter roll data with the federal government, and is being sued. But despite all these claims, our ballots in Washington County are not confidential. Our votes are not secret. ORS 254.400, Section 1, states, "In an election, an elector has the right to cast the elector's ballot in a confidential manner, with no other person knowing how the elector voted in that election." By printing unique QR codes on our ballots and making it possible to identify how an individual votes, Washington County is violating this statute, our right to cast our ballot in a confidential manner. Now on to the tally of votes. On page 41 of the Vote-by-Mail Procedure Manual, it states, "Once ballot counting begins, tally all ballots before ending Election Day count." I've been an observer during the closing of the Washington County Election Office for most of the primary and general elections since 2020, and for the 2024 King City Recall election. Contrary to the procedure manual, during the major elections, our county does not tally all the ballots before ending the Election Day count. On election night, the ballot tabulation pauses, unfinished, and resumes the next day and continues for days. Tonight, I plan to observe the election from the observer room with a limited view of all the processes, and stay until the office is closed. Will Washington County Election Office follow the procedure manual and tally all the ballots received by the end of today before ending the Election Day count? The election night results are scheduled to be posted three times tonight, at 8, 10, and midnight. After that, the election office does not update election results for three days, not until Friday, and after that, only once a week. But in the meantime, our election office will be receiving and accepting ballots received by mail, with or without a postmark, for seven days after Election Day, as allowed by House Bill 3291, which took effect in 2022. During multiple elections, I and others have observed the number of ballots arriving by mail after Election Day does not correspond with either the verbal or the written reports given by the election office. The discrepancies have totaled in the hundreds and even thousands of ballots, numbers large enough to change the results of multiple elections. By not finishing the Election Day count, ballots received by Election Day get intermingled and tallied with the ballots that arrived by mail for the seven days after an election. This delayed tallying and mingling of the ballots makes it more difficult to verify election results, especially with a limited view of the processes. To make elections more transparent and verifiable, we request this Board to direct the Washington County Election Office to remove the QR codes from ballots, allow in-person observation of all ballot processes, as outlined in the Vote-by-Mail Procedure Manual, tally all ballots before ending Election Day count, as outlined in the Vote-by-Mail Procedure Manual, and at the beginning of each day that ballots are tallied after Election Day, generate and publicly post the results at the election office and on their website. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Latre. Clerk Maz, who do we have next?
The last in-person we have in the room is Stephen Hunter, and then we'll have Charlie Henderson by Zoom.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Stephen Hunter. I am a resident of the Wilsonville area. Contact information is on the letter that I have presented to you. I appreciate this opportunity to publicly express my opinion and convey information of concern. As you are aware, a portion of the city of Wilsonville lies within the boundaries of Washington County. Thus, you have constituents within city limits. I wish to bring your attention to a growing issue within Wilsonville city government. The issue is the adversarial attitude and mistreatment by the newly-elected mayor, Mr. Sean O'Neill, towards other elected council members and citizens of Wilsonville. Recently, his management style has resulted in the immediate resignation of a respected sitting council member and appreciated resident of Wilsonville, Ms. Katie Dunwell. The party-line excuse for Ms. Dunwell's resignation is "personal reasons," which is an excuse typically used when problems of deeper concern exist. We now know, in Ms. Dunwell's own words, why she resigned her seat immediately. You have that information in front of you today. This explanation is true, as conveyed by Ms. Dunwell's own hand, made public in print, and social media. Of great concern to me is the verbal and emotional abuse exhibited towards Councilmember Dunwell. This abuse is as damaging and can be more permanent than physical abuse, and can cripple in ways not obvious in an outward manner. Victims of psychological abuse can carry emotional scars for a lifetime. I pray Ms. Dunwell receives the help and support she so well deserves. By the same measure, the perpetrator of this abuse must be held accountable for the injury and damage he is doing. If not controlled, Mr. O'Neill will continue his pattern of abuse. He will continue to victimize others that he deems weak or not in favor of his plans and schemes. These are not traits of a successful public leader, but of a tyrant and dictator. Please keep this information in mind as you conduct business with Wilsonville City Council. There is a pall of worry and concern regarding who the next victim of the mayor may be. Mayor O'Neill cannot be trusted to deal in good faith on issues of mutual civic importance. Likewise, the remaining city council members may make decisions against their will or better judgment solely to avoid the mayor's wrath or gain his favor. Thank you for your attention to this matter.
We have your letter, Mr. Hunter, and we'll include that in the official public record for the meeting. Thank you. Clerk Maz, who's next?
All right. We have Charlie Henderson on Zoom. Charlie, can you hear us?
I can, Clerk Maz. Am I coming through clearly?
You are. Please go ahead for up to five minutes.
All right. Perfect. Thank you so much. Good morning, Chair and County Commissioners. For the record, my name is Charlie Henderson, and today I want to briefly respond to some things that I heard this morning during the AM work session. First, I really want to give the Board, the CAO, and County Council their flowers in responding to the cuts to SNAP benefits. As a constituent here in Washington County, I am painfully aware of the deep level of cuts that have been made across the board to every department. And I know that in this moment, as our CAO has put it previously, we're already at bone, and it feels like we're digging into the marrow. It's incredibly heavy work that you all are doing on this front, and I appreciate it. I echo the Board's wishes, too, that however the funding gets allocated, we need to ensure that it's being done in a way that directly helps as many people here in Washington County as possible. We shouldn't be having this conversation, but that's what the federal government's actions is putting on us. On the topic of ICE activity, though, what I was hearing is that we are trying to put money into the immigrant and refugee community in order to lessen the burden currently being put on them. That's genuinely great. The issue here, though, as has been discussed, and we've heard during every public testimony in front of the Board, is that it's not just the financial issues that are crushing our predominantly black and brown community members. It is ICE. It is masked men that are not from our community coming into our community and abducting members. They don't identify themselves. They don't share badge numbers. They change costumes. They change license plates. They threaten community members who record them. They use excessive force. They often do not have judicial warrants. And they will often round up people in the area to fill a quota rather than to, quote-unquote, "keep the community safe." Commissioner Snyder's insight in pointing out the definition of terrorism earlier here is greatly appreciated. The Chair said that during this AM work session, that 31% of the county voted for Trump, and that she didn't want to disenfranchise them. But Trump's entire policy right now is centered around disenfranchising the other 69% of us. He and his administration have made it abundantly clear that regardless of whether the majority of voters or citizens in any given area actually want ICE activity, that they're going to be there, especially in blue states. To be clear, it's not the people being abducted, the families that are being ripped apart, the community members that are terrified, pissed, and disgusted by what we're seeing. It's not the kids that don't know if their parents are going to pick them up from school. It is not the people asking for help that are causing county leadership to have to make these tough choices regarding the budget. It is Trump. It is Stephen Miller. It is a white supremacist regime that are making it clear that they do not care about what the majority of Americans want. To Commissioner Therese's point, this is what is hurting and costing our county money we were not expecting to have to spend. And I just want to ensure that this Board never loses sight of the fact that just because you want to stay in your lane, as far as being at a county level, that Trump and his secret police have no qualms about trampling over your jurisdiction to see that their wishes are fulfilled. The point is this, and it's been echoed previously, the sheriff's office isn't expected to or being asked to insert itself to stop ICE from going after, quote-unquote, "legitimate targets." But they are 100% expected to show up when folks are calling them, scared because masked men around, abducting their families and friends. They can absolutely show up, be present, document what is going on, and ensure that ICE agents are actually following the law. If the Chair or the sheriff's office know of more important things going on than these abductions in our community, please share it. Otherwise, I ask, listen to what is being said, and help to put pressure on law enforcement at a local level to keep our community members as safe as possible. That's what they're there for. That's what we're asking for. I genuinely thank the Board and the CAO for all of your work today. Thank you.
Clerk Maz, anyone else?
Nope. That concludes our 30 minutes of public comment today.
Thank you. Next... Next, I'll move on to board announcements. This Thursday, November 6th, we'll be having a Washington County Board of Commissioners Roundtable starting at 9:00 AM. On Friday, November 7th, we'll have a Clean Water Services Board of Directors Work Session Day, starting at 8:30 at the CWS Central Building, and the public notice is included in this packet as well as posted online. Next week, Tuesday, November 11th, is a federal holiday, Veterans' Day. We will not be having board meetings next week, and that includes next Tuesday. The following Tuesday will be the second Tuesday of board meetings, and as such, we'll be having an evening business meeting starting at 6:30 and a board work session starting at 2:00 in the afternoon. Tuesday, November 25th, is part of Thanksgiving Week, and we will not be having any board meetings that day. Are there any other board announcements for today? Seeing none, I would ask my colleagues what you would like to do, and also ask both Mr. Shanley and Ms. Angie's guidance. Per the work session agenda, we were being asked to reconvene an hour ago for a Clean Water Services Executive Session, and prior to this meeting, I understood that there would be staff from CWS here at the ready for that. But obviously, we won't make it until 10 past 12:00. Then we have a number of topics for the remainder of the afternoon, in addition to the need for a lunch break. So what guidance can you give us to sort through how we're going to navigate those matters?
So Chair, without speaking with CWS telepathically across this room, I would suggest your Board adjourn for lunch and then convene at 11:00 in your CWS Executive Session.
You mean 1:00?
1:00. Sorry. Yes, sorry. I was reading and speaking at the same time, a skill I need to refine. At 1:00, and then I will work with the team on looking at the rest of our agenda and report back to your Board after you are out of CWS Executive Session.
Mr. Shanley, does that meet with your and CWS business needs?
That definitely meets with our needs. I would also offer, if we need to reduce our executive session to 30 minutes, we could prioritize the topics and do so.
Given the number of topics that CWS has provided me with notice on, I don't think that's reasonable. So we will reconvene at 1:00 in the afternoon, picking up with Topic 5. So at this juncture, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn the business meeting of today, and when we regather at 1:00 AM, it will be for an executive session, so we will have the remainder of our work session topics to follow, and I'll ask for a motion for the executive session at 1:00.
1:00.
1:00 is 1:00 PM, is it not?
That's correct. You had said 1:00.
Oh, thank you for correcting me.
I was trying to politely reach for...
Yes. Good catch. We have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, 5 to 0. We're hereby adjourned, and we will reconvene at 1:00 PM in the afternoon. Thank you.